Okay. This board meeting of Monday, April 13th, 2020 is called into session. And we have a picture of the flag on the screen. Jane, if everyone, please stand. And Jane, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Unmute your mics, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And the board, if you'd please keep your mics on for a moment. And Jane, will you please conduct a roll call?
I will.
Board President?
Galbraith, please.
Present.
Vice President Morgan.
President.
Secretary.
Board.
Present.
Board Member Coleman.
Did you say Colin? Board Member Colin.
Present.
Board Member Coleman.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a quorum. I want to welcome everyone to our virtual board meeting tonight. And with keeping in line with the Attorney General's office, we will continue to have virtual meetings as we go through this time with COVID-19. And so we will also only be presenting necessary items that will be on our agenda. So thanks again for all being here. And we're just working our way, trying to get through all this. And to start off tonight, we'd like to invite Dr. Cleveland for item D to give us some introductory comments. Dr. Cleveland?
Okay, here we go. I'm trying to get my agenda up. And I'm having a hard time with it. Give me just a second. I think I've done something wrong. Amanda, if you wouldn't mind, just, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
Would you read the item to me until I can get my agenda up unless Jane could put it up on the screen?
I just have down that you're going to be doing comments. Jane's getting.
Okay, unless I don't have any comments, so.
Oh, you do not? Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Well, then we will move on to approving the prioritized agenda. Let's see. Okay, so remember, I just want to remind everyone that as we are presenting, and I should say now that this is Amanda Galbraith, Board President, and I'll be conducting the meeting tonight. But every time we present or we, as board members, as we speak, we need to make sure that we say who we are. Also, every action item on this will be done through a roll call vote that I'll have Jane do, and just so that we can stay with, in the correct way with our Open Meetings Act as we go through this virtual meeting. Okay. Okay. Let's see, so item, sorry, I'm going through my thing. So we're going to approve our prioritized agenda. Do we have any comments or concerns on the prioritized agenda?
Okay, so I'm raising my hand, so I don't know if you see it.
Oh, I do see it now. Sorry, thank you.
The board member Catherine Cullen. So item E, it says, "Consider Approval of Shining Stars Preschool Dedication Plaque." And I think it should be both Joe Harris and Shining Stars. Is that correct?
That's correct. That is correct. But if we did correction on one, maybe vote.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I couldn't understand you.
Okay, right again. You're absolutely correct. I'm getting terrible on my.
Dr. Cleveland, you have two windows open with Google Meet on. So maybe take a look at your internet browser and see if you can disconnect one of your Google Meets. Looks like there's two on, so your camera's in it, so it's causing a echo.
That's what it is, thank you.
There we go.
Okay, I think that's it. Okay. Board Member, this is Sue Cleveland, Superintendent. A Board Member, Colin, that's correct. But if we get direction on one, it will apply to both. And so we just want to be sure that the board is all on, all understands kind of the history behind it and what the options are. So in reality, yes, it would be both, but it's the direction that we really need.
You're muted, Catherine.
Sorry. So I just wanted to make sure if we needed to add Joe Harris onto that agenda item as well, and if we can. Lauren?
Lauren, can you hear us? Is it okay if we just have it as is, or do we need to add?
I, well, I, it'd be better if we actually had it on the agenda, both of them. But I think it's a general kind of discussion about how the plaques have been done with the schools. And so probably just general guidance on how the board wants to handle it now is probably sufficient.
Okay, because, yeah, it was an action item, so I wasn't sure because of how that note read. I think it was because of how that, they wanted decision on how it is to be read for the plaques so they can order them right away.
Yes, that's correct.
Let's just go ahead, and I don't see any hurt to go ahead if we can just change that to add both on our, before we approve the agenda, if that's okay. Just add Joe Harris in there. Are there any other questions or comments on the prioritized agenda as it is?
I move to accept the prioritized agenda with the addition of Joe Harris to Section E.
Okay, a motion by Secretary Scott. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Vice President Morgan. And Dr. Cleveland, do you recommend approval? I don't know where she went. That's okay. Jane, can you take a vote, please, on approving the prioritized agenda?
Yes, I'll take a yes/no roll call. Madam President Galbraith?
Yes.
Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Colin?
Yes.
Thank you. Board Member Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The motion carries 5-0. We will now move on to item F for public comment. We do not currently have any public comment for this meeting, though. For future meetings, as we're doing these virtual meetings, if the public is currently watching us, please know that you can give public comment by calling our receptionist or also by email. If you get onto our website, you will see direction on how to do that. And so we invite all who would like to give public comment to please do that. For our next meeting, you will have up until 30 minutes prior to the meeting starting to give your public comment that we will then talk, that we will then read here in our meetings. Okay. Okay, moving on to item F, approving the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
I do.
Okay.
I just had, in reference to a couple of bars, there was, my understanding, there were some bars for March, but our meeting was canceled. So are those bars in this one? Or are we having to ratify any bars for March? That would go to finance.
Yeah, Mike, are you on? Can you answer that, or?
Hi, this is Arlene Monsonatis.
Hi.
Yes, all the bars are included.
Okay. Thank you. And then I just had another question in reference to the SAFE dollars because that bar is in here in reference to in them. And out of more information about the effective operational funds, push that into our Finance Committee. So I don't have specific questions in March for approval today, but I would like to some additional information during Finance.
That's fine.
So to clarify, you would like additional information on the SAFE, that those SAFE funds that were in the bars, correct, during the Finance Committee meeting?
Correct. Yes, just because we're going to be moving it over to operational funds versus, because we're not taking any payments within the SAFE program.
Okay.
This is Secretary Scott. I would like to make it clear for the public that it's a budget adjustment request is what a B-A-R stands for, in case people were wondering.
Thank you, Secretary Scott.
Are there other questions or comments on? I'm having a hard time getting you, Catherine, I think.
Yeah, I turned off my mic.
Hearing no objection, I move to approve the consent agenda. This is Noreen Scott, Secretary.
Do we have a second?
Catherine Cullen, I second it.
Thank you. And Dr. Cleveland, do you recommend approval of the consent agenda?
I do.
Okay, Jane, can you conduct a roll call vote for the consent agenda?
Yes, I can. This is a yes/no vote. Madam President Galbraith?
Yes.
Vice President Morgan? Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Colin? Board Member Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to our business items. We will start with item A. Consider Approval of the March 9th, 2020 Unapproved Board Minutes. Do we have questions or comments on these minutes?
This is Board Member Colin. I, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
So on just item C, we had discussed about capturing more into our minutes of discussions. And it says that item C policies 405 and 406 with recommended changes. And so we didn't capture in our minutes what those recommended changes were.
Okay. I think in our policy, it still doesn't say for minutes that we have to add to those, but we can definitely make sure in the future that we're adding to those. I don't know if that's something that we should have Jane do or if that's something that we should do, we could add into the minutes and copy to her.
This is Board Member Coleman. It cut out for a second. I wanted to ask if Board Member Colin could please repeat what she had said.
Yes.
I'm having the very same issue. So I'm not sure why, but people are getting cut off and we're not hearing the whole, the whole sentences sometimes. So Board Member Colin, I appreciate if you would repeat that.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay now?
Yes.
Okay. So we've been discussing, when we've talked about capturing more within our minutes, and item C of the minutes shows that in reference to Policy 405 and 406 with recommended changes, we did not capture those changes in our minutes. And so that was my thing is that we should be capturing what those changes would be.
Then my recommendation would be that we pull this and come back with those changes at the next meeting, if you would like more specificity there.
Yeah, because that was one of the things that we've been in discussions with is that you need to, we need to be capturing a bit more within our minutes so the public can understand what is being discussed with those. So is, just because we put changes in there, it doesn't describe what those changes are.
Would it be? Go ahead. Sorry, go ahead, Dr. Cleveland.
Were the changes not included in the policies themselves? My understanding was that the, we changed the, but maybe I'm wrong on that. We changed the policies and those changes were included in the policies themselves and would be found in the policies. Is that not your understanding?
This is Board Member Catherine Cullen. Lauren, could you answer that? Because I know you were presenting those at the time. And I think that there was a, was there a couple of changes that we had made at that second reading?
Madam President, this is Lauren Hatch. I believe that there was a couple tweaks that we made to them, but I'd be happy to work with Jane to make sure that they're clarified in the minutes. And I could see either approving them interim improvement now and review at the next meeting, or just having this done at the next meeting, whichever the board prefers.
My concern with that is that if we start putting everything we change in every policy, then we're going to have a huge amount of changes that are in the minutes. And generally, historically, when we change the minutes, I mean, when we change the policy, we do not go and list all of the changes. So maybe our better approach for this would be just to say that we adopted the, you know, policies 405, 406 as revised. And anyone has an opportunity to go and check the policies, but we start putting in every change that we make in a policy. We're going to clutter up our minutes with things that are really easily found in the actual policies themselves.
Board Member Coleman, did you have a question or a comment that you wanted to give?
Thank you. This is Board Member Coleman. I'm just checking. There, I believe that there are, there is policy directive on how to handle things like this, so I'm just looking to see if I can find it. And so if I can, I will go ahead and let you know. And while I also have the chance to speak here, I also want to make sure that we are, as all the board members, that we can be seen visually. I think that we are required to be visible, correct?
Yes, so John has the screen set up so that it looks different than what your screen looks like. And it has every board member and Dr. Cleveland on it. And then it has just those who are presenting, I believe.
Okay, good. So if I find that policy, I'll go ahead and I'll somehow indicate that I found it.
This is Lauren Hatch. Again, I think the difference here is, I don't have my notes in front of me. I apologize. But I think there was actually some tweaks that were made from the version that was in the board book to the final version. And I think it would be appropriate if, that we should record those in the notes because they weren't in what was, to my recollection, they weren't in what was presented to the board initially. But I'm happy to work with Jane to make sure that that is clarified.
So what you're saying is every time we make a change to a policy, we're going to need to include that in our notes, in our minutes?
No, that, so most of the changes are included in the draft that's presented in the board materials. We're talking about ones that are made during the meeting, like a verbal change during the meeting from what was published, if that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you, yeah.
It limits a lot, yeah.
But it still was corrected then and goes into the, into the minutes? I mean, into the board handbook?
It does, yeah, it does.
All right, thank you, that helps.
This is Secretary Scott. So can we do approval of these minutes pending the addition of the changes made to those two articles? Or? Can we do that?
I think the board could.
Okay.
Catherine, how do you feel about that?
I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure, we've had discussions on making sure that our minutes are capturing a bit more further discussion for transparency reasons. So I just wanted to make sure that because of how this read in the minutes, so I'm fine with that, that we could approve. And then they can go ahead and add those notes. I don't think they were significant. I think there was just like what Lauren says, a few tweaks. But because I don't, I don't have those notes as well and because it was different from what was published, so I'm fine with going ahead and approving, just like Secretary Scott mentions.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes pending the addition of the tweaks that were requested.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Secretary Scott. Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Board Member Coleman.
Okay, a second by Board Member Coleman. Jane, can you conduct a roll call vote on this?
Yes, I can. Before I start, I had a note from IT. If board were to keep yourself muted until you speak, that might help the feedback that we're hearing. Here's, here's the roll call. Madam President Galbraith?
Yes.
Madam President Galbraith?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Colin?
Yes.
Board Member Coleman?
Yes, and if I may also too, for the record, Policy 211 addresses that when it comes to minutes and board, board agenda, so.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Coleman, we'll have to look back through that. Okay, did you want to, did you want to discuss that real quick, Board Member Coleman, or is it something that we can look at?
This is Board Member Coleman. It does just say, "Minutes don't need to be verbatim, but shall be more detailed than the agenda and provide an informative account of what transpired at the meeting." So it gives a little bit more information. But I do know that we wanted to make sure in, when there were changes, that we were making, that we were having record of that for ourselves, in addition to the general public.
Okay. Thank you. And so I don't know, we could probably, probably should put that on a future. I remember we talked a little bit about that, but maybe on a future agenda to talk more about how we want to get, capture those, maybe in a workshop session, how we want to capture those additional notes to go into, into the agenda. Does that sound appropriate to everyone?
Sounds fine to me.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Lynn, for that. So let's move on to item B, which is the approval of the April 7th, 2020 Unapproved Special Workshop Minutes. Do we have any questions or comments on these minutes? Do I have a motion to approve?
This is Secretary Scott. I move to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
This is Board Member Catherine Cullen. I second.
Okay, thank you. Jane, can you conduct a roll call vote for this?
Yes, a yes/no vote, please. Madam President Galbraith?
Yes.
Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Colin?
Yes.
Board Member Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries 5-0. We will now move on to consider the approval of the NMSBA Scholarship nominations. Beth Pendergrass will be presenting this to us.
Good evening, Madam President Galbraith, members of the board. Dr. Cleveland, this is Beth Pendergrass, Chief Communications Officer. Each year, our high schools nominate students for the NMSBA scholarship. So this year, we had three nominations. And the board really needs to select one person that we submit to the NMSBA. And I did notice that they extended the deadline to May 1st. So we do have a little more time on this if you were to select one and you wanted additional information submitted with it. But the selections are based on the demonstrated leadership, academic performance, community involvement, and extracurricular activities. And so the board has three to choose from this year.
Are you going to go through each of those, Beth, or?
I imagine the board went through them, so I would to let me know who they would like to recommend. And then Jane can get that submitted on behalf of the board to the NMSBA, so.
Okay, thank you. We will open it up for discussion. Why don't we go down our line with Board Member, with Board Member Colin, if you'd like to have some discussion with, with these nominations? Hopefully, everyone had a chance to look through them.
Let me, sorry, I'm taking off mute. They were all great submissions. And then, I mean, it's a tough decision. And I don't know how anybody else feels, how, do we just want to? Because it's kind of tough to always try to pick one out of the three. And that's always kind of been our issue. But there was one that you want me to throw out, the name that I kind of felt that, you know what I guess, is how do you want to do this, President?
Yes, why don't you go to the one that stood out the most to you? If that's not making you feel too uncomfortable. They were all amazing. I will agree with you as I looked through each one. I, each of these students definitely stands out, which is why they've all come to the board.
Right. And let me, and I apologize. This is why I print everything out, guys, because I'm scrolling. It was, let me see which.
Could I ask Lauren just a question very quickly?
Yes, please.
Is there any problems with us discussing these personal things about these students publicly?
Well, we probably should first be careful what we show up on our screen.
Concerned too. We're putting very personal information up there. And I think we probably should, we might do better, know that the board's all reviewed these. And it might be better just simply to make a nomination and a second. And then if there's any general comments, but yeah, I'm very uncomfortable about the personal information we're putting on the screen.
Agreed. Thank you, Jane, for taking that down. And thank you, Dr. Cleveland, for bringing that. That was a very good point.
Yeah, I'm glad that you noticed because I wasn't looking over on the screen. I was looking on my own. So I guess, because I've let every, I don't know if somebody has a certain one because there is one that I would nominate, but I guess if somebody else wants to discuss before I do so.
I think you are, I have a feeling that we're probably all kind of on the same board if we want to just go ahead and nominate one specific one. It's so hard to do these sort of things because we are not able to discuss anything beforehand or anything like that. So is there discussion? Or how about before we even talk about the students from the board, is there any discussion on this and what it means, what the scholarship means? If we can, we can have, we can talk a little bit more about the scholarship and what in the process of it, if anyone has a question on it?
You know, there is one other thing we could think about. And I didn't think about it prior to now, but there is another option. And that option would be to have a ballot and let people mark their ballots. I don't know if you want to do that or consider that for the future, but we didn't do that this time. So I think it's fine to discuss these, these very fine students in general. But I don't know, getting into great specificity is really a good thing to do in a public forum, including showing pictures and those kinds of things.
I agree. I agree. I guess I would like to suggest that we submit our, our thoughts to Beth and let her get, be the tally for the votes.
I can, I don't know if we can vote in that way because it needs to all be done publicly.
Can we text to Beth right now and then let her?
It would still need to be public. It's, it is, it is really, really hard, but yes, it all has to be done publicly.
Madam President, this is Lauren Hatch of General Counsel. I just recommend entertaining nominations and then taking them.
Yeah, I will go ahead. I'll just start. I think everyone's feeling a little weird. I would like to nominate, of these, they were all really, really good. But Molly Garrettson, when I read through hers, it just really stood out to me. She has, from what I understand of the process, and this is part of the reason I think I'm going to say this, unless we want to get more information from some of our students. When I read hers, there, it was just a very, very complete nomination. It had a lot of information about her. And it, her very consistent throughout her high school time of the things that she's done. And this, I believe, we nominate a person and it goes to New Mexico School Boards, and then they choose from each of the districts. Is that correct, Catherine, that we, and Beth? So we put these in and, and then they take from all the different districts. And they choose students out of that. And so there's no, if we put this one, it doesn't necessarily mean that's the one who will get the scholarship. Go ahead, Catherine.
Okay, so the, the process is, is that New Mexico School Board Association does take these nominations. It goes to their region officers. And then the region officers will go through them and then they will decide which one gets that one for the region. And this year, they have enough dollars, it looks like they're going to actually do three different awards of scholarships this year, is per region. But only, you can only do one nomination per district, from school district. And it'll be presented in May for the winners. It's, so the, the officers will be a part of that decision making. So it's, it's a great opportunity for these students. And in the previous years, just to kind of let you know how it is, is, so the previous year winners, those districts won't qualify for this year to be able to be, have a winning scholarship. Does that all make sense? I was trying to explain it while I'm looking at the, at the scholarship nomination. And, you know, Amanda, I agree with you, that one was very complete. And I think it was a great submission for the scholarship. And it gave a great detail for those region officers to be able to take a look at it and be able to, you know, it's a good submission.
This is Secretary Norine Scott, and I'll second the nomination that President Galbraith made.
But I might have an option.
Go ahead, say that again, Jeff.
I might have, this is Board Member Jeff Morgan. I might want to nominate someone else.
I believe.
So before.
If you would like to nominate, I think we have to choose from just these ones that have been brought into us at this, at this time.
No, no, I mean, I get it, but my, my co-board member was already ready to make a second and haven't given me a chance to vote. I mean, that's.
I was going to open it up to more nominations before I took a vote.
Jeff Morgan, I looked him over and I was pretty impressed with Mr. Robbie, though. I really was. When I went through there and saw all of the, the military achievements that the young man had accomplished, I was pretty impressed with that. So that's the reason why I thought Robbie should be a candidate or should be the runner up for this scholarship.
Board Member Coleman, go ahead.
President Galbraith, I too would like to see Robbie be the one that we, that we present.
Okay, well, so I haven't had to deal with this before as president. If we took a roll call vote, and Catherine can probably tell me best here. So we have two nominations out. Can we do, and that maybe Lauren Hatch can help me out too, can we pick each name? Or do we need to do the nomination with a yes no for the first one and then for the second one, a yes no?
This is Lauren Hatch. I think you already have a nomination and a second. You probably need to take a vote on that.
Okay.
And then you could entertain more nominations.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to go, we're going to work with our first nomination. And I will ask Jane to do a roll call vote for our first nomination of Molly Garretson. And after this vote, if, if we do not have, we can, we can do another one for other nominations if needed.
Okay, this is a yes no vote for Molly Garretson. Madam President Galbraith?
Yes.
Vice, Vice President Morgan?
No.
Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Cullen?
No.
Board Member Coleman?
No. And I would, I would really ask that we get the chance to have the discussion before we move on to a nomination in a second. I think that that's really important, that we have that ability for everybody to be heard appropriately.
Okay, well, let's take time to discuss some more at this time. This is scary because all these, all these students, I just want to say they're all fantastic. And so you can see my facial expressions of the nerve and nervousness of even having to discuss one over the other. Board Member Coleman, would you like to discuss more about this?
I just know what an exceptional young man Robbie is. And I think he would be, just, it would be just an incredible opportunity for him and a great acknowledgement for him to be given this opportunity to be considered for this. He's just been an exceptional leader for not only the senior class, but for the student body. And just such a well-rounded individual, whether it's by faith or military or anything like that.
Okay, Catherine Cullen, would you like to discuss more?
Yes, this is Catherine Cullen. And I just want to say, no matter what, they're all deserving to be nominated, to be submitted. Unfortunately, we can only do one, and they all have great accomplishments. I mean, I, I looked at originally when you had mentioned Amanda, I actually had somebody else in mind originally. So I think each one looks at the applications a little bit differently and, but he does have some great service. And then, again, I, it's unfortunate that how we, this process, I mean, it is, we have to be transparent, but it's really tough to make a decision out of three. So I, I do think that reviewing Robbie's is, he's certainly outstanding student as all of the, all of them are. But if there was any other discussion or I can make a nomination, a motion, I'm sorry.
Is there any other discussion on Robbie or on our other, on our other application that anyone would like to discuss?
Okay, so I'd like to go ahead and nominate. Would you like me to do that, Mr. Morgan? For Robbie Galang, I'm not sure how to say that last name.
Okay, do we have, okay, we have a second by.
Oh, good, but Jeff Morgan, I second.
Okay, Jane, can you take a roll call vote? And I can change my vote at this point, I think, right? Yeah, it's a new nomination. Lost the other one, so. Okay, Jane, would you please take a roll call vote for the nomination of Robbie Galang?
This is a yes no vote. Madam President Galbraith?
Yes.
Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Cullen?
Yes.
Board Member Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Norine. Thank you. I love you.
Okay, so motion carries five zero now for, for Robbie Galang as our, as our Scott, to be submitted for the scholarship through New Mexico School Board Association. So thank you all for the discussion and thank you for putting up with me who's still learning all of these things. So I appreciate you all. Okay, we will now move on to item D, which is to consider the ratification of the New Mexico School Board Association Student Achievement nominations. And Catherine Cullen will be presenting this to us.
Yes, thank you, President. I reached out to Madam President and as well as Beth Pendergrass and messaged Dr. Cleveland. With the New Mexico School Board Association, we are able to do student achievement nominations. And I believe most of you should have had received emails from New Mexico School Board Association in reference to it. And in, we, we had missed this because we did, we canceled the last board meeting. So I sent a couple of recommendations over to the president. And then Beth Pendergrass also had a couple of recommendations as well, which I think is very fitting. And so because it was due by April 1st, we went ahead and sent it, but we wanted to, but I wanted to make sure that we ratify it as a board. So we had nominated, and there's a number of them, and obviously, we're not, we want to nominate everybody. We have, I mean, there's just, everybody's working so hard. And I, I know that we'll probably do some kind of recognition for them later in the year. We're not able to do it, the regular recognition ceremony in May like we usually do. But because of what's been going on, I really felt there was some departments, I mean, they've all stepped up. But there's a few departments that I really thought that the board should recognize. And the New Mexico School Board Association will give us plaques for these departments. So it was with, we had nominated Melanie with Facilities and the Facilities Department. Paul Romero with IT, Sal with Safety and Security, Mark Willis and SEDEXO, and Michelle Havel with Safe Program. And the reason with Facilities Department, they really took great care during this in going and sanitizing all the schools and the district office. And I've been over at the district office and they've taped off the, the rooms that they've sanitized. They, they really spent a lot of time taking care of this facilities during this time. So a lot of this has to do with the pandemic that's been going on is where the nominations came from. Paul Romero and the IT department for all the Chromebooks and getting the internet connections set up for all of our students. And then Safety and Security is feeding our students. They were out there. I went out and visited one of the sites when they were doing, giving out the meal program. And the, the Safety and Security Department were out there helping out with those. And then SEDEXO, of course, providing those meals. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the summer program. They, they provide the meals during the summer and they've really stepped up during this pandemic in providing the meals to our students. And we're continuously adding new students every day on these deliveries. And then as well as the Safe Program, providing the services, the daycare services that are needed. So anyway, that's kind of where we were at. And Beth, did you want to add anything on that when we were kind of discussing it?
Good evening. This is Beth Pendergrass again, Chief Communications Officer. I, I think you covered it. I think it was really difficult to really pinpoint everyone that's working at this because so many people are going above and beyond. And we know our teachers was a group that we talked about as well and, and finding a different way to recognize them. And, but so many people are working hard. And so we tried to capture a few of them, but recognizing that everyone's working hard. So I think you guys did a nice job of capturing that.
So President, I would recommend that we, you know, because we're just going to ratify. We did send this on over to New Mexico School Board Associations, but we do need to ratify it as a board. So we'll have to do a motion in a second on that.
Thank you. Just really quick, I wanted to give Dr. Cleveland a moment just to, to give her comments on it. And then, and then I'll, we can go for a motion for a second.
Well, I think it's all been said pretty much. Everybody is working hard, every single group of employees in the school district. But it is nice to recognize this group. They're out there kind of on the front lines. They're kind of in the middle of the storm, so to speak. And, but we will follow up and we will make sure that others are recognized as well. We're looking to do our teachers on our educational assistance on Teacher Appreciation Day in May. And so we will try to make sure that, that everyone knows, that every single person has been part of making this, this transition these very challenging times successful. And so we thank all of them, but it is nice to recognize this group.
Thank you, Dr. Cleveland, for that. And, you know, and today it was snowing outside and we had, we had individuals out at schools giving Chromebooks out in the snow. And so we do, we just have an amazing district staff who is going beyond during this time. A time where, you know, we've never had to deal with anything like this. We just have amazing, amazing individuals in our district. And so are there any other questions or comments from anyone? You can just shake your heads if you're, I can look at you all. Okay. I will entertain a motion then to, to approve, I'm trying to think, to, to ratify these, these nominations.
Board Member Jeff Morgan, I second the motion.
Okay, I guess I did the motion. I'll just do the second with that. So Board Member, or Board President Galbraith with the, with the motion and the second from Vice President Morgan. Okay, roll, Jane, can you conduct a roll call vote then for that?
Well, Madam President Galbraith?
Yes.
Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Cullen?
Yes.
Board Member Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane, for that. And I just also wanted to thank Catherine Cullen for making sure that we caught that and we didn't miss the deadline for that. And I think these are really important things, and there's a lot of things that we can miss right now with, with just kind of how hectic everything is. So thank you, Catherine, for, for making sure that we got those through on time. Okay, and we will now, this will take some discussion. We'll have a consider of the approval of the Shining Stars Preschool dedication plaque and also the Joe Harris dedication plaque. And Melanie Archibek is going to present this to us.
Good evening, Madam President Galbraith, members of the board and Dr. Cleveland. This is Melanie Archibek, Executive Director of Facilities. Before I move forward, I just want to say thank you very much. I will share this with my team. I really appreciate the nomination. Now onto the topic. So we are moving ahead with both schools. We do have a bit of challenges because of the pandemic that we're in now. But we're at the point where we're getting ready to order plaques, dedication plaques. And I apologize, I didn't take the date. But in winter 2019, there was a board meeting where it was kind of, I think it was an impromptu discussion that was brought up during the meeting. And I wanted to confirm, at the time, I understood that it was the board members that were present at that time when, when the project started, design and construction, that we would capture on the dedication plaques. But that was my assumption. So I wanted to, I guess, get confirmation if I understood correctly or if it's when the bonds passed. And then from there, I just need to get confirmation on spelling, positions, order, everything so that we get this made correctly.
Thank you, Melanie. Dr. Cleveland, would you like to give further comment on this before I? Uh, Dr. Cleveland, would you like to give further comment on this before I go to the board?
Uh, yes, um, historically, going way back to the beginning of the district, this is the process that has been followed, and, but normally, it was a little quicker, and this one's a very unusual situation. This situation is that, you know, we were, we promised this building for, especially Joe Harris, for 10 years, and so, lots of boards have been involved in the bonds, in the letting of the contract, and you will be the board that sees the school open. So, we didn't want there to be any misunderstanding or bad feelings about it, did find that some districts do it a little differently, and they put all of the boards that were part of the process, as opposed to just one. There is a little additional expense to do that, but it would cover everyone, but this is what we have done, this is the process we have followed in the past 27 years, so, but you certainly, if you wanted to do it differently, we could just, you know, we, we could, could hear that discussion today, so that's just a little bit of background, and it's, we want to be sure that everyone's on the same page.
How many board members would it, would be involved if you listed everybody who'd worked on it?
I believe there would be five more added.
Yes, that's correct.
Because several people have served on various boards, so, um, so if you went back to the bond, you would have, for example, Carl Harper, I believe, was on that back at that time, or then we have new people who've come onto this board, but I, I believe that when we looked at it, it would be five more total that would be added if you went that direction.
President Galbraith?
Yes.
If I may, this is Board Member Coleman. Dr. Cleveland, would you explain how things have, how you have handled this in the past again? I, I just want to make sure I understand.
Yes, Board Member Coleman, in the past, it has been the board that approved the contract, and unlike in the past, though, generally, we approved a contract, and within a year, the building was built and finished and all of that, because we were putting schools up very rapidly then. We've never had a situation where it, it really, a, a project lasted over 10 years in order to get built, so that's the uniqueness of this one. In the other schools, it was approved, and it was built, and it was open, and this is a very different situation, so that's why we thought it was important for the board to, to talk about which, whichever way you wanted to go with it. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did, thank you.
Okay.
And Board Member Coleman, do you have other questions or comments that you want to make about it?
Um, well, again, this is Board Member Coleman, I would just probably lean towards kind of how traditionally things have gone, I understand this is a unique situation, but however, that would play out, just kind of keeping consistent with, with how things have happened in the past.
Okay, thank you. How about Board Member Cullen, do you have questions or comments that you want to make? We'll get her, she'll get there, I happened to me the other day.
The window kept popping up and down when I tried to unmute it. So, um, I, you know, I, because it going, this would go back quite a bit, and when you're looking at, I think, when I got on the board, we had been talking about Joe Harris elementary for a while, we were looking at Carl Harper at the time was on the board, and you're trying to get that done, and I, I was kind of looking when we was looking at this, because then, we even changed sites and redistricted with this, let me see, we redistrict, was back in, uh, March, I think, 2000, wait, hold on, I'm looking at my information here, we changed the relocation of the site July 26, 2018, with the, the board that was on there. And so, I know back, I was going back through my notes, boundary changes, we, we had Joe Harris discussions back on March 13, 2017, and we had thought back then that it would take four to five years to get that building built, but, you know, it's, it's going along pretty well now, and, um, so, in Shining Stars, this has been for years, but I, I do think that it, it would be good to keep it with the tradition, and, because we're probably going to see this over time, and you're going to have a lot of names added. So, then, anyway, my recommendation is kind of keep it like what we've done before, but, you know, that's a great way, you know, for all of us to discuss, thanks.
Thank you. And Board Member Cullen, Secretary Scott, would you like to discuss or have any questions on this?
Well, I guess, for the minimal amount of cost of adding everybody's name, I, I guess I would err on the, on the side of listing everybody who's worked on it. That would be my thoughts.
Okay, and Vice President Morgan, do you have thoughts or questions?
Board Member Jeff Morgan, yeah, I agree with Noreen. If we can get him on there for minimal cost, yeah, let's just get it done.
Uh, Dr. Cleveland, so I, I know that there is, I personally, I honestly, it doesn't affect me either way to have a lot of names on, on the thing, you know, especially my own, that's not an issue for me. If there are people who have, who have worked on it extensively, it might be a nice gesture in the past who have done a lot for it, I think that could be a nice gesture, and you guys brought up Carl Harper, for instance, if he's done a lot of work on it, that might be a nice gesture to have his name on it, and I, I'm sure that he doesn't mind either way, just, just knowing him. And so, Dr. Cleveland, what are some of the costs with doing that, and how would the building look? I don't think we want to load a building up with a gazillion plaques for everyone's, everyone's names to be on there, and so, if you would give us some more insights, I'd appreciate it.
I would have to defer to Melanie on the costs, I think adding a few additional names is not going to be significant cost difference, but it will be some, you know, just there'll be a little bit larger plaque. You've seen the plaques when you've gone into the schools, they generally right inside the front door, and they're very large, and they're very prominent, and they're very nice, because you want them to last forever, but Melanie could probably tell us better exactly how much more money, I know that that was shared with us once, but I don't remember the, the total amount, but it would just require a, a larger plaque. We would not do multiple plaques, I don't think, but would put the, the, you know, just would list the, the current board, the, the original board that led the contract, and then the other board members who had worked on it. So, Melanie, do you want to try to give us a little bit of an idea of how much more a larger plaque would be?
Um, I don't know the exact cost, but the submitter that they sent, they actually had my name and a few others, and I, I pulled the executive directors off of that, so it will be very minimal, and we'll make sure that it's one plaque as opposed to a number of plaques, but when you look and consider the budget of both projects, it's, it's very small. I, I'm, I don't know the exact cost, so.
Okay, thank you. More discussion on this, go ahead, Catherine Cullen.
So, um, are you just talking about Joe Harris, or are you talking about Joe Harris and Shining Stars? Because different people worked, because timelines are completely different from Joe Harris and Shining Stars. And then...
I, I believe that, to be just really very honest, I think that the, um, yeah, Shining Stars doesn't go back 10 years, it, it's a much, much shorter timeline, and so, for that one, I think it's a very different situation. I also think it's a different situation because of the community attachment to Joe Harris, and the emotional feeling that so many people have about the school, and about the man, and about the building. So, I think there's probably more interest in, in the Joe Harris, just because it's been 10 years. Joe died approximately 10 years ago, and we made that commitment back at that time to build a school, and it's been a long, long haul to get it, but thankfully, it's going to get done now, so, so to your point, Board Member Cullen, I think it's more Joe Harris, that there, that you have a much shorter timeframe for Shining Stars.
And then, and what names were you looking at adding, because then, because I'm seeing Don, Carl, and Divya, because we're talking, those are just ones that I had served with, and then, I know that there's more board members prior to that.
Well, there would certainly be this board, if you're going to add the name, so you definitely want to put this board on as well, not replicating the names, so the way I would see it, is you have the board that did the contract, and that would be the, the first set of names, and then you would have a second set of names of other board members who contributed to the effort. So, you would look just like this, and then, the way I would envision is just below that, would, you would list the other board members who contributed to the projects, which would include the current board, and then the board back with, with Don and Carl, and I couldn't remember if Divya Sh was on at that time, but I think you're right, I think he may have been.
And then, because this went back so far, I mean, I know it's gone through several cycles, as I recall, on the bond issue as well, so that's why I'm just wondering how many boards back, because I just know that those three that I had served, and I think it went farther back than that, so I just want to make sure that we get, if we're going to capture all those, that we capture all of them, and I think it's more than five additional names, because you're looking at three just on this current board, three on the previous one, and I would assume some other board members worked on that as well.
I think it's just the six, I don't think it goes back any further than Carl Harper or Don Schlicky or Divya Shpatel, so I don't think you go back any further than that.
And, Melanie, can I ask one quick question? So, typically, do we have the, the executive directors on those plaques as well, that you decided to pull them off for this one? I feel almost more concerned with that, okay?
I've seen them on it, but it, it's very rare, I don't think it's appropriate.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure, I would, I just want to make sure, go ahead, Board Member Coleman.
Um, thank you, President Galbraith, so I, I do also, and this is when Coleman, Board Member, have a question about, I know that we're talking about Divya Sh, Carl Harper, Don Schlicky, but then, it's, it's those people, and then, it is the, the previous board, and then, the new board now, and I think that there are just some, I, I mean, if that's how we decide to go, just some nuances that we're going to need to figure out as far as the plaque, just based on what I see as far as what Melanie presented, because we have people broken down by district, and then by officer designation too, so I'm just curious how this is all going to kind of look, if that's how we all vote to do it.
I believe that the way we would see it, Board Member Coleman, is it would look like what you see on your screen, and then below it would be the listing of the names of the other board members who've contributed. I don't know, it would be up to the board, whether you would want to put officer and districts and all that, or whether you would want to just put below that, other board members who contributed, and the dates, or something like that, so I think it would look different than, than, this would look the same, but what you see on the screen would be the top, and then below that would be the listing of the others. I think that's how we envisioned it. Melanie, am I correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, and I think that, honestly, I think that would, if we decide to go that way, I think that would be most appropriate, so to just have, instead of trying to list everyone's district and every sort of thing that they've been, it would just have their names, I think that would be appropriate.
And, and to your previous question, no, we have historically not done that beyond the board members and the superintendent, a couple of buildings, I think we did for some reason, I'm not sure exactly why, but historically, that's not been the case, and so, I did want to be sure and, and answer that question for you.
Okay. Sorry. Um, further questions, go ahead, Catherine.
Sorry, hand raising doesn't quite work, so it brings my...
It's just, we're my comrades.
Okay, so I just kind of looked up, um, so they, there was approved funding, it says, for the school back in 2012 bond election, and then, I think it was done in 2016 as well, and then, as now, so that's why I just want to make sure that we capture everybody, because I would have to go back and see who was all there, but if it, it might, and I think it was probably at that time, just, well, if it was the 2012, and I came in on 2013, then there's a couple of other board members too, that would need to be added if it was voted on in 2012. Because my position was held by Ronaldo back in 2012. So, I just want to make sure, if we do this, we want to make sure that if we're going to capture everybody, then we literally want to capture everybody, so we'll need to do some research if we do it that way.
I, I think that the bond issue and the boards are not necessarily one and the same thing, but, but we'll be glad to bring that list back, but I think we've got to go ahead and, and move on this. Melanie, we're on a time crunch, are we not? So, we just say we'll go back, and we'll do our, we'll do our checking, make sure we've got everybody, but I think we need to move ahead on this this evening, in order to get the plaque done in time for the opening of the building.
Can, can we get clarification real quick? Um, so, we're talking about Joe Harris going back, and that has a longer history, adding all the names, Shining Stars, what's the direction on that one?
Go ahead, Dr. Cleveland.
My, my thought on that, it's been a really short, a shorter timeframe, but again, that's up to the board, I think that we would not have to go back as far, like to 2012 or anything, we could include both board, we could include the, the board that did the contract, and then the other board members now, again, it would not be very many people to add to the, the list, but that, it's strictly up to you, I mean, that's a decision you all make. I, I do believe that the, the primary emotional attachment for most people is the Joe Harris site, just because of the circumstances, and because of the, of the community thing, but we could certainly, would just be adding three additional names if, if we do it, so I would, in this case, you just might want to do both, but it's your call.
Okay, just to move us along a little bit, can I get a feel kind of?
Well...
Everyone is at, go ahead, Win.
Noreen Scott, I, I think that we should include all the names, and I like the idea on Joe Harris of going back and, and listing the, the board members who began the journey, and, and bring it current, and I agree with what was said with Flying, with Flying Star, with the, with Shining Stars, I think that, that seems like a good solution, and I just think that spreading recognition is never a bad thing.
Okay, thank you, Secretary Scott. Board Member Coleman?
Um, yes, this is Board Member Coleman, I do want to also just make sure that we do include Catherine Covey on there, so.
Yeah, I, I'm glad you brought her up, I was thinking that just a few minutes ago too, so thank you for, for mentioning that. And Jeffrey Morgan, do you want to give any comments on this?
You know, Board Member Jeff Morgan, I gave my comments earlier, so good, thank you.
Okay, and Catherine Cullen, do you have any further comments? From discussion? You can also, there you go.
No, I'm, I'm fine, and I think, like I said, if we just go back with Joe Harris, you know, we just want to make sure that we don't go, we don't leave anybody out, so just doing the research, and I'm fine with that, that was the only thing, this is, we might have a bit more names than just five than what we thought, and then, and I, thank you, Board Member Coleman, in reference to Catherine Covey as well, so, and then, Shining Stars can stay kind of as is, like that was presented, thank you.
Okay, so take a look really quick, oh, hold on one second, Noreen, everyone just take a look at the spelling and all of those, the district things, does everything appear correct that's on your screen, or at least for that top portion?
And Ramon needs that little thing over his N.
And yay.
Yeah, and yay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And President Galbraith, this is Board Member Coleman, if it's not too much, may I also ask that my middle name be included, please, which is Diane. I know it sounds funny, but it can be interpreted, I would just prefer, it just identifies my gender, and I've just struggled with my name, I struggle with that.
Okay. Now, I... Okay, now I think that's great. So Melanie, so we need an N耶 on the accent on Ramon Montano and Montano. And then Diane added to Win's name. Is there anything else that you see that needs to be corrected on those top names? Anyone?
Win, how do you spell Diane? This is Noreen Scott, Secretary.
D I A N E.
Okay. All right. Some have two ends. That's why I wanted to be sure for the staff.
Okay, so from what I understand, we are good with the above plaque looking like it is presented on the screen. Below that would be district, would be board members who have worked on it throughout the years for both schools. And noting that for Joe Harris, that will be more names. Understanding that that will be looked at and made sure that no one's missed on that. And then for shining stars, it would be a smaller list of names for shining stars. Is that correct? Everyone's understanding before we take any action or motions that that's what we're?
I have one more question. I just want to be sure Martha has maintained the Jansen. I believe that she has. Anyone know otherwise?
She did change her last name, but I did text her when I saw this was on the agenda. And she said that because that is the last name that she had while she was the board member.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Catherine, for doing that. Okay. So Melanie, do you have anything else that we've missed before we take action on it?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Melanie. Thank you, Dr. Cleveland. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve this for facilities?
So moved.
Okay, a motion by Noreen Scott. Do we have a second?
This is Board Member Coleman, I'll second.
Okay, a second by Board Member Coleman. Jane, can you take a roll call vote for us, please?
I will. Madam President Galbraith?
Yes.
Yes or no? Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Cullen?
Yes.
Board Member Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so motion carries five zero. Thank you so much, Jane, for doing that. And thank you, everyone, for your discussion. And so we'll move on to item F, which is consider board action on the canceling of the RFP number 2020-013-it-You Rate Category One Internet Services. Paul Romero will present this to us.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Just really quick, we wanted to inform the board that earlier this year, as you know, we went out to RFP to increase the capacity of our network for, really for times like this. We have increased the bandwidth and we have great capacity for that. But what we wanted to do was prepare the network for what we call a failover. So if part of our network was under attack, say with the DDoS attack, we would be able to fail over to another circuit. So we went out for an RFP and we had several people that bid on that. And we selected the company called Zayo. I believe they're out of Denver. And we brought that to the board and you did approve for that to happen. Well, because of what we're going through right now, it puts us in a very different situation. Because what we, doing something like this and moving to a different service is really a forklift for us on the network side. And because it's a lot of work, we basically have to break everything and build everything up again. So what we did is we focused our, all of our energies on making sure that we were installing a new cloud-based web filter for, so that kids could take Chromebooks home and still be safe. So we changed our focus. So what we wanted to do is we contacted Zayo and let them know that we were changing our direction. We're focusing on the pandemic. We wanted to make sure our kids were healthy and they were getting everything they needed. And we were going to go ahead and cancel the RFP at this time. They were very, very understanding. They understand what all the schools are going through. And they were very, and they agreed to the fact that that was probably a very good decision for us. More than ever, we needed consistency right now, more than anything in changing a system. So we wanted to bring it to you and just let you know that this is what we intend to do, is to go ahead and cancel this contract. We will move forward and probably as things settle down, again, investigate this and probably go out for another RFP. Because we always want to get the best price and the best service for what we offer our kids. Also want to let you know that we're currently in the second year of a five-year contract with Conterra, who is our current provider. So we don't, we're not in a struggle to rush into anything right now. We actually have time to wait and to to really think about what we're going to bring in for our kids. And that's really all I have to report this evening.
Thank you, Paul. And I also want to say thank you for wearing a headset like me, so I'm not the only one. Okay, I want to open up for any questions or comments. We'll start with Board Member Cullen. Do you have any questions or comments on this?
No, I don't. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you. Secretary Scott?
No, I don't have any comments.
Vice President Morgan?
No comments.
Okay, and Board Member Coleman?
Yes, I do have a question. Again, this is Board Member Coleman. Mr. Romero, what was the cost or what was the price that was provided when we were, when we were looking at doing this? Or when we accepted or approved this?
I believe this Paul Romero, Executive Director of IT, I forgot to say that. Board Member Coleman, I don't have the price in front of me. I don't have that contract with me here. But I know Mr. Madrid, I think, is online and he may recall what the pricing was. I know it's going to be a little bit more than what we paid now because we were increasing the circuit. We're getting an additional circuit, but I don't know if he might have that information on hand.
President Galbraith, members of the board, Dr. Cleveland. We were still negotiating that contract with Zayo, so those final numbers weren't there. I could pull the proposal in and give some numbers from what we received when we did the solicitation, but the final numbers weren't complete until we got the final negotiation of the contract done.
Okay. And I just want to go ahead and just really, when we look at doing this again, if we can, I know that by policy, anything that we're expecting to be 60,000 or more before the bid is open, that it just needs to be just discussed with the board, if I can just put that request in.
Board Member Coleman, it was my understanding, based on policy that we take to the board, proposals that exceed 60,000 bucks, but the actual discussion prior to the solicitation doesn't happen with the board, with the exception of a couple of procurements. But all the procurements that exceed the 60, we do take to the board, whether it's an RFP or an ITB.
Right, right. And I just, I just want to make sure that, before it goes, my understanding is, and if I can just get clarification on this, but before a bid is open, that it's presented to the board. And are we, if we can just make sure that that happens?
Board Member Coleman, I'm not sure that that's happening. I'm not sure that, it's always been my understanding that it's post. We're not going to know what the numbers were are until we actually get the responses back. And then with the RFP, we actually conduct the negotiations, the ITBs, we actually have hard numbers that, yes, we could have. But it would be difficult to do it prior to the actual submission of the responses.
And again, this is Board Member Coleman, and Lauren might be able to speak a little bit more. I just, I'm looking at a policy 613. And it states, and if you could bring that up, maybe even, Jane, I don't know if you're able to do that. Just have a question about this. As we go through this process, then again, that the word of education shall receive prior notice of major bid openings. And I just want to make sure that we're following our policies. And if this, if this situation is one of those circumstances that we're just following our policies. So I just need some clarification on that.
Lauren, could you address that? And, but I do also want to, again, just reemphasize, we're canceling a contract, not awarding a contract.
I understand.
I just want to be sure everybody is on the page that that's what we're doing at this point. But Lauren, would you want to make any comments on that?
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Cleveland, that is what policy 613 says. I don't know how we do that in practice exactly. But that is what, it's in the second paragraph of policy 613.
Go ahead.
Major bid openings. An example of it is something that's over $60,000. So if we're not doing that now, I think we could come up with a process where the board receives notice before a bid opening.
Well, and Michael and Paul, if possible, I think as these come up, I think a lot of times we can kind of have and, you know, an idea that it's going to be, if it's going to go over that 60,000. And so maybe in the future, and we do, we understand that we're just canceling this one, which I think is great. But, you know, just as we come into the future, if it looks like, you know, something that's going to be in that $60,000 range, it would be something that you would just come to the board and just give us, just give us some notice that it's, that it's going to be coming up with us, understanding that you don't know the price of what that will be yet.
And President, this is Lauren Hatch again. I'm thinking that perhaps it could be a report to the board in a meeting. It could be some kind of a written report that gets a notice or directs the board to the website, because the website contains all the, all the procurements that are being processed by the district.
Okay.
And President Galbraith, this is Board Member Coleman. And I do understand that we are canceling that. My point in bringing this up now is because when we need to address this again, I think that it's just important. There's only one open RFP right now on our district website. But I just think it's important that we follow through with policy and making sure that if this, when it comes again, that we need to look at this or when the RFP is rewritten, that we follow that, which is in policy. And so that's why I wanted to bring it up and just wanted clarification on that. Knowing that there are times that we can't really say for sure if it's going to be 6,000 or $60,000 or 59,999, but just something that we need to really make sure that we follow through with. So thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Coleman. Okay, Dr. Cleveland, do you have any further comments on this before we take a motion?
Yeah, just that we'll look at the process on it. We have an awful lot of them. We have a significant number. So to look at how's the best process to get that information out. And so we'll work with Michael Madrid and with Lauren and we'll come back with what we think might be a good process for doing that. But I don't know that we want, you know, to take a lot of time with some of them. I think what Board Member Coleman is asking for is just the notification. Is that correct?
Yes, I feel like that's correct. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is, this is Board Member Coleman. And it does just say that we are made aware of that and that that's going out. I mean, and it's in policy. So I did forward that to President Galbraith, that she can go ahead. And I think that, Jane, you even have it up there on the screen. So that really just speaks to what we are, what we should be doing. And I just want to make sure that we are, that we are doing what we're supposed to do in our policies. And I thought that this was a good time because I don't know, that's why I had asked what the cost was for this when we approved it. We just, it's important that we're seeing these things that are going to be 60,000 or over before it's actually opened up to the public, so.
Yeah, and you know, and as we look at this too, you know, if it's seeming, Jane, can you scroll down a little bit on that policy on the, just down to the bottom of the page?
I'm not seeing that.
You don't see it on, so it's on there. I just wanted to see the dates that it was, you know, as we're reviewing things, we're in the midst, everything's kind of in the background a little bit because the way we're doing meetings right now. But as we're reviewing policies, I mean, these would be great things for us to review and to discuss. And so if there is any discussion, you know, from the district as they want to look through this policy and then we can discuss it more in a, in a, in a future meeting. And I think, you know, maybe it's good room for discussion to think about, you know, the way to notify the board. And it doesn't have to be difficult. And also if there's maybe any sort of change that we should do with that policy. So if we could all just take a moment, you know, to review that. And then as we come up with these policies to, you know, that we can change them or talk about, talk about it more in the future. So any, go ahead, Board Member Coleman.
Again, this is Board Member Coleman. And I know that we will be reviewing policy. That being said, I think that it's important, if we do decide to change it, that until that time comes that we revisit that policy, that we abide by that and stick with that until that time comes that we decide it's appropriate to review it again and to make any necessary changes.
Yes, thank you. I agree with that. We need to make sure that we're going by our policies, by our policies now, so. Future, any future discussion or future discussion, any further discussion on this before we take? I'll entertain a motion if anyone wants to give a motion to approve this.
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve the RFP, the cancel of the RFP number 2020-013-it-You Rate Category One.
Morgan, I second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Board Member Cullen and a second by Vice President Morgan. Jane, can you take a roll call vote on the cancellation of this RFP?
I will. This is a yes/no vote. Madam President Galbraith?
Yes.
Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Board Member Cullen?
Yes.
Board Member Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries five zero. So we'll move on to our last item, which is to consider the approval of the recommendation of allowing the, of the edgenuity option for spring 2020 only and use of district-created assessment in future years. And Dr. Happy Miller will be giving, be our presenter on this.
Thank you. This is Happy Miller, the Executive Director of RADA. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
We can.
Good. Madam President, Dr. Cleveland, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. This follows up on the workshop from last Tuesday regarding the ability of students to demonstrate competency requirements for graduation. The PED allows through the class of 2021 for districts to add graduation competency options for students beyond their state plan. Most of the normal options for demonstrating competency at this time of year, for example, end of course assessments, work keys and Accuplacer are not available right now due to our public health emergency. As mentioned by Ms. Sessedo last week, our plan is to provide students with review using a modified edgenuity course materials and to provide an assessment of the review via the edgenuity platform. Since edgenuity has not previously been approved by the board, we are respectfully seeking your approval to add it now as an option for this spring only. We also have a second part to our request. Do you want me to continue with that or would you like to discuss this part first?
And go ahead and move on to the second part.
Okay. The second part is that one of our most commonly used options is the end of course assessment. One advantage of using the end of course assessments is that no additional testing is necessary as this assessment service, both the final exam and as a means of demonstrating competency. We're not pulling students out of class in order to give them a different assessment. The PED had previously publicly announced that end of course assessments could be used by students through the class of 2023. However, the PED unexpectedly released the current state EOC forms and answers a couple of weeks ago. Rio Rancho has a history of developing high-quality, rigorous end of course assessments. For a number of years, we were the only district in the state that had PED approval to use its own end of course assessments for graduation purposes. Given the recent change to PED-created assessments, we would like to reaffirm that the board approves the use of district-created assessments for graduation purposes. Given the recent change to PED-created assessments, um, we would like to reaffirm that the board approves the use of district-created assessments for graduation purposes as long as the PED allows us to do so. Which would definitely be through the class of 2021, but since they publicly announced, EOCs will be available to students through the class of 2023, we would like to ask the PED to allow us, to use district-created assessments for that purpose through the class of 2023.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Miller. And, okay, uh, questions or concerns that doctor, or now I'm in doctor mode. Would you like to, would you like to give any, uh, questions or comments?
So, um, is those P, uh, the, the EOCs, were they, as I recall, they're going to be modified if we do them?
For edgenuity?
Well, because the, the EOCs that you guys are going to be giving, because they're not really going to get a, a, a complete semester this year.
This spring, we're not calling them end of course assessments. For this purpose, it would be a modified assessment given on the edgenuity platform.
Okay, so, and, and so it'll be modified, not our typical one. You guys will be coming up with something a little bit different.
Yes, for next year. So that's why we tried to word it that the edgenuity would be for the spring only. And for next year, um, we would like to go back to giving end of course assessments and district-created end of course assessments, that have been put together by teams of teachers and our curriculum and instruction department.
Okay, thank you.
A, a quick addition to that, um, it's something that we got from, um, the Deputy Secretary. They are not even sure we will continue within of course assessments next year. And there may be some different approaches to assessment. So, uh, that's not been decided, I don't believe for sure. But, um, there could be some changes even beyond this next year as they move. Happy's very involved with that. Dr. Miller's, uh, since I'm at State Committee and, and certainly has a, a, a lot of opportunity to provide input on it. But we actually Superintendent Scott, uh, uh, said that we may not be using EOCs as we know them next year.
The dis, that is true. The PED may not provide end of course assessments. Next year, districts still would have the option of adding an option that goes beyond the state plan. Um, and then starting with the class of 2022, districts may not have the opportunity to provide additional options.
Okay, uh, any further questions? Uh, Board Member Colin? No? Okay. Uh, Secretary Scott, would you like to give any questions or comments?
No, I have none at this time.
Okay, thank you. And Vice President Morgan?
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And Board Member Coleman?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm, I'm moved to make a motion to pass this.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a, a motion by, uh, Board Member Coleman and a second by, uh, Secretary Scott. And Dr. Cleveland, do you have any further comments before we take our roll call vote? You're muted. Okay, maybe. Okay, I guess we're okay.
We're, we're okay, sorry. I, I,
Okay, no, that's okay.
No, I, I believe that Dr. Miller handled it. Uh, she covered it very well.
Perfect, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Miller. Jane, can you, uh, conduct a roll call vote for this?
I will. Uh, Madam President Galbraith, yes or no?
Yes.
Vice President Morgan?
Yes.
Secretary Scott?
Yes.
Madam President Cullen, I mean, hello, Board Member Cullen?
Yes.
Board Member Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your motion carries five zero. And, okay, we, um, are there any further comments? By anyone, uh, before we close our meeting today? Dr. Cleveland?
Uh, just a couple of comments. Um, this morning, as I, um, every Monday morning, I am on a, um, a webinar with, uh, with prez and, and, um, they share kind of the overall, um, perceptions of Presbyterian UNM and Lovelace. And so I just want to share with you kind of what they, they told us this morning. We are behind the surge, uh, in other parts of the country. And so when people are talking about they've had the surge, it's plateauing and, you know, that's not what's happening here yet. We're, we're behind that. And so they're projecting that the surge will come at the very end of April through the first two weeks of May. So I, it's just in terms of us thinking about the future, uh, we've obviously got a, a ways to go unless something dramatically changes, which we will need to continue to, to, uh, meet virtually. And, um, the other is, uh, you know, to, to look at what we will do this summer. We will have some challenges. We need to get our policies done and yet, um, Lauren is saying we really should try to wait on that for now and see what, what transpires, uh, be, because those are probably, um, items that can be deferred, but they can be deferred into August or into September. Uh, we need to have those policies finalized before the new, new year starts. So we'll wait and see what kind of, um, of, um, guidance that we do get. But, uh, we, we still are a long ways before this issue gets resolved for our state, uh, based on what we heard this morning. So care and caution and continuing to meet virtually is probably going to be a way of life for us for at least, for at least a little while. But, um, you know, we, we will, we will wait and see. So anyway, thank you all for your patience as we work through this and kind of learn. It's a whole different way of doing things for us. Uh, but, uh, really do appreciate your help and support as we kind of learn a, a new approach.
Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Cleveland, for that. And thank you, everyone, um, for being here at our meeting today. And thanks for, I know it's a whole new platform and we're all learning. Um, as far as our advanced planning, uh, just as Dr. Cleveland was saying, our board and finance committee meetings will be streamed until further notice. And so on April 20th, we have a finance committee meeting that will be at 4:00 PM. And on April 27th, we have our regularly scheduled board meeting, um, done virtually at 5:30 PM. Also, once again, for those who would like to give comments, um, you can do so. Those need to be emailed in or call our receptionist at the, um, district office to, to give those comments. And so we, this meeting is now adjourned. So I hit my hand on the thing. Thank you guys so much for, for being here today.
Goodbye, everyone.
Bye, thank you.